All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to the last council meeting of 2020, meeting for December 8th of 2020. Want to start out with our, what is now our normal reminder that this meeting is being held remotely due to COVID-19 health and safety requirements and by order of the governor. There was an extension of that proclamation today that meetings continue to be online. So we are doing that. A live broadcast of this meeting is available on Kent TV 21, also on our City of Kent Facebook page and our YouTube channel, which is also Kent TV 21. There is additionally a phone line set up for those wishing to call in to be able to listen to the meeting. All right, with that business out of the way, Kim, could you please call the roll? [S02] Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor Ralph? Here.
Council President Troutner?
Here.
Councilmember Boyce?
Here.
Councilmember Fincher?
Here.
Councilmember Cor?
Here.
Councilmember Larmour?
Here.
Councilmember Mouchau?
Here.
Councilmember Thomas?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Kim. Moving on, we are at item number three, which is the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda from council administration or staff?
No changes from staff this evening.
All right, seeing no changes, a motion would be in order to approve the agenda.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the agenda this evening.
Second.
All right, there's a motion, the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries seven zero. Agenda stands as published. All right, we are going to move on to public communications. We'll start out with public recognition. Before we go into our employee of the month, is there any council member that has public recognition this evening?
Madam Chair, may I?
Absolutely.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize one of our esteemed council member who have, we have a birthday on December 10th. Councilmember Thomas, I'd just like to, I'm sure with the rest of my council member, lightly wish you a very happy, happy birthday. Happy birthday, sir.
Thank you.
All right.
Seventy, seventy-five.
This is a big one, Councilmember Thomas.
It's a big one.
All right, see, and I don't, I noticed that none of your colleagues volunteered to sing. So I don't know if that's a sign-
That's okay.
-any singers in the crowd. I'm not going to volunteer to lead you in song, but know that in our heads, we're singing happy birthday to you.
All right.
All right, thank you so much, Councilmember Boyce, for that recognition, and happy birthday, Councilmember Thomas.
Thank you.
We are going to move on in public recognition to our employee of the month. So every month, the City of Kent employees get together and they submit nominations for employee of the month, and it's a recognition of their coworkers, whether it be for a special project that was accomplished, or just, you know, how they come to work and, and show our city values every single day. And I am really pleased to announce our December 2020 employee of the month is Dee Martindale. Dee was hired in February of 2017 as a temporary project analyst, engineering tech one in the Public Works Engineering Division. In January of 2019, she was promoted to an engineering tech two. As an engineering tech, Dee is responsible for performing technical work to support the design and/or inspection of engineering projects for streets, sidewalks, sanitary, sanitary, and storm sewers, water mains, other municipal works projects, all the things that help keep our city running. Through her work, she's continuously supporting the engineering group, engineering group by assisting engineers, inspectors, and others to help move public improvement projects to completion. In Dee's nomination, it was noted that she came to the city with many decades of experience in the title industry. Her knowledge base is incredibly important to the right-of-way acquisition and property management process. Her knowledge, and especially her wisdom, far surpasses when it comes to her areas of expertise. "I am forever grateful to Dee for her patience in sharing information and checking my work whenever I ask," said one of the nominations. Dee is known as a person who everyone loves, and in turn, she's always able to get results in her work. People want to help Dee because she approaches them with sincerity, honesty, likability, charm, and is always humble. Dee continuously embraces our values, and we celebrate her as December's employee of the month. I can tell you, if you haven't had the chance to meet Dee, she is absolutely everything that is said here in this. She's got a giant smile, always has a hello, how are you, and she means it when she asks, and she does amazing work for us here at the city. So please join me in congratulating Dee Martindale as our December 2020 employee of the month. All right, we are going to move on to community events. Are there any community events this evening, Council President?
Madam Mayor, I think just a couple of things to share. We have Candy Cane Lane coming up on the 5th of December from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. It's a drive-through event at the Valley Ice Arena. It's an opportunity for you to drive through and see Santa, and also-
Council President, I'm going to interrupt. It's actually the 12th.
I'm sorry, thank you.
This Saturday.
It has happened already.
Yes.
Thank you. And then we have, on the 19th, we have one of our mask giveaways. That will be from 12:00 to 2:00 at the North Meridian Park, and it's really great to see people in our community coming out to get their free masks. And when you're out and about at the grocery store and people are, are out wearing those, it's really fun to see that collection being shown off around town. So another opportunity, and I believe at that event, you get to pick which mask you'd like.
Yeah, we are going to have all of the different varieties available, and they'll be in, in surprise bags. So no, won't know exactly what's in there, but I want to second, Council President, what you said. The, the love this community has shown through their mask-wearing, and the pride, the Kent pride that they have to, to show off when they're wearing them. I will tell you, it has been such a, taken such a thing that maybe isn't so positive, having to wear your mask everywhere, and turn it into a really positive thing. I am hearing from colleagues in other cities how they wish their cities was, were doing this, and people could be, you know, showing their, their community pride. So lots of fun events around the masks. Any other community events? All right, I am seeing none. So we will move on to item number five, which is reports from council and staff. It's an opportunity to hear from all of us about the work that's being done outside of the Committee of the Whole meetings and the council meetings. I will start with a fairly brief report this evening. I've shared with you that we've been meeting with our legislative delegation to talk about our legislative priorities. Those meetings have continued over the past several weeks. And we've also included legislators from outside our direct area to work with them on streamlined sales tax, which is our number-one legislative priority. So our multimedia team has put together a great video that explains what streamlined sales tax is and the impact it has on Kent and cities like us. It's been received very, very well by legislators as they're learning about the inequity that was created when the, the sales tax sourcing changed. So very positive meetings. We did have our virtual tree lighting last Saturday. It was on Facebook Live. So much fun to be able to carry on at least some of the traditions that we have here in the city even during the times of COVID. So our Public Works, our Parks Ops team did a fabulous job decorating the park. We had a magic switch that we were able to flip. The lights came on. Again, want to say thank you to the Lions Club for partnering with us on that, but the park looks fantastic. If you haven't had a chance to get down there, I highly recommend it. I also, I attended the Puget Sound Regional Council Executive Board meeting last week, and we had a really interesting panel. It was moderated by Boeing and Alaska Airlines. And so the conversation was really around what does travel look like going into the future? And, you know, it's one of our hardest-hit industries. You think about air travel and tourism. So some sobering news, that the belief is that we are probably not going to see a return to 2019 levels of regional travel until sometime in 2022, and international travel probably not until 23 or 24. And that's a long time from now before, you know, and you think about it, you think about companies like Alaska Airlines and Boeing, and while they're major companies, their supply chain that trickles all the way down to the, to the smallest companies are going to be impacted by this going out, you know, like I said, clear into 2024. One of the things they both really stressed was now is the time to double down on education and job readiness, so that when we come out of, out of this, the pandemic, that we have employees that are able to then pick up that work and have the skills to, to jump in when those jobs start to come back and new jobs are created. So I know it's something we're really focused on here at the City of Kent is workforce training and making sure that, especially our, our folks that may have lost their job as a result of the pandemic are going to come out of it with more skills than they had going in. So really good presentation. I will wrap up with just a, a note. We heard from the governor today. He is extending the current restrictions, which is a ban on all indoor dining, things like gyms, fitness centers, dance studios, movie theaters are all closed down. That extension is going through January 4th. So my ask to all of you out there watching is find a way to support a local business. It is more important than ever. This round of shut, of shutdowns, we're, we're starting to hear more and more bad news for, for businesses that just are not going to be able to hang on through this, and with another three-week extension, it gets that much harder. So please find a way to support a local business and help, help them continue to employ others in our community. All right, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Council President Troutner.
Or did you want to turn it-
Oh, I'm sorry. We're going to turn it over to Derek Matheson. So it happens, I don't know-
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. Wanted to say congratulations again to Uriel Varela. Uriel takes over as our interim race and equity manager on January 1st. This, of course, is a new position that the mayor and city council added to the budget recently. Uri has been a member of our communications team for a couple of years, where he's worked with our cultural communities, and most recently with our neighborhood councils. So his deep involvement in equity work is going to allow him to hit the ground running on an issue of high importance here on January 1st. So congratulations to Uri. The mayor mentioned the governor's latest restrictions, and I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you to our department directors, as well as their deputy directors, who have re-reviewed their approach to COVID-19 in the wake of the governor's orders. We're really doing our best to balance the safety of our workforce with providing services to our community at the time the community needs us the most. So thank you very much to our directors, deputy directors, and all of our employees who are serving on the front lines here in Kent. The rest of my written report is in the packet, and there is no executive session this evening. Thank you.
All right, now we'll turn it over to Council President Troutner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had two workshops today. The first one was on, it was the Park Impact Fee Study, and currently the parks are being paid for through BNO taxes, real estate excise tax grants, King County levies, donations, volunteers, and partnerships. And that money is just not enough to maintain all of the wonderful parks that we have around our community. So there was a conversation about the park impact fees, if that was something we would want to look at, what that means, and working with the groups in our community that that would really affect. So more to come on that. And then we also had an update on the Green River Flood Control Program. We've got amazing work going on around the city, and we can't do it without partnerships from King County Flood Control District and money from the state. First and foremost, that flood protection provides protection throughout the city from the Green River, also provides habitat, which people forget, and it provides recreation opportunities along our parks and trails. So had an update on that. If you're interested in watching any of our workshops, those are taped, and you can go back and see those on TV 21, and any of the other channels where we broadcast our previous meetings. I sit on the Regional Law Safety and Justice Committee. We had a meeting last week, and we talked about the Community Court Update and women in the court, criminal justice system. And the community court program that typically offers services to people in the court system, they're not able to do that now because of COVID, so they're doing it virtually. And they're really not having the amount of people participating that they really hoped they would during this time. So they just want people to know that that is still available. If you go to kingcounty.gov/communitycourts, there are services available for legal advice, food assistance, mental health services, and that's open to anybody that is part of that meeting, community court services. We also heard from several women that have been in the criminal justice system, and there's really a need for continued training within the court system, women that have been incarcerated, mental health, emotional support and education. And that's really key to these women that are in our court system to help them be successful when they get out. So we heard some really great success stories from some women that have been in the prison system and have gotten out and been able to be successful because of opportunities that they had to better themselves within the court. So very great conversation there. And I'm also on the Regional Transit Committee, and we continue to talk on changes for the metro service guidelines, and we'll, we'll focus a lot of our attention on that after the first of the year. Now, I will turn to my colleagues to see what they have been up to since our last meeting, and I will start with Councilmember Mouchau.
Thank you, Council President. I serve on Kent's Human Services Commission, and we got an update about the King County Climate Action Plan, and they focused on the public health disparities, especially here in the South Sound. Here in the South Sound area in Kent, we have high rates of obesity, diabetes, mental distress, and higher rates of environmental exposures, and affects than other parts of King County. It was really interesting just to see the maps highlighted, you know, areas like in East King County have lower rates than down here in the South. So we discussed why that is. And I serve on the Regional Water Quality Committee, and our meeting is tomorrow. So that concludes my report.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Cor, do you have anything to share this evening?
Thank you. Yes, I serve on Growth Management Planning Council. We had our meeting on December 2nd, and we basically had more updates on county-wide planning policies, and we have more to come in the new year, so I'll share as we get more information. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Larmour?
Thank you, Council President. So I serve on the King County Aging and Disabilities Advisory Council, and we will be having our meeting on Friday. And then I also serve on the King County Affordable Housing Committee, and we will not meet again until the first of the year. So I'll have a report then. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Boyce?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I wanted to say, we had our Sound Cities Association Annual Meeting on December 2nd. Fun time, great meeting. I got in the way of my tuck with my nest little tie on, so lots of fun, lots of breakout session. We had Chris Metford, who's economist, really shares some really good information with us. My pick meeting is on 12/9 tomorrow, so the main thing is a legislative agenda. That's the only day we'll be taking action on, on tomorrow meeting. Also, was it on November, on December 11th, there is a South End Caucus meeting, right? So I think they'll be discussing 2021 issues, and also to be electing, uh, or new board members to serve on the South End, for the South End. And I think 12/15, there's a board meeting with the, the board from 10:00 to 2:00. So, and tomorrow will be our last meeting, and also I get re-elected as the vice chair for one more year. So that's all I have to share. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and congratulations, Councilmember Boyce, on that reappointment, or on your election. Councilmember Thomas, do you have anything to share?
Thank you, Madam President. I serve on the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority, along with our Council President Troutner and our Councilmember Boyce. Mostly, we met on December 2nd, and that will be our last meeting for the year, and that will, we discuss some labor negotiations. And that's about all I have, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Thomas, and Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you, Madam President. I serve on the Mental Illness and Drug Dependency Advisory Council, that's MID, and we will not be meeting until next week. But I do want to thank the mention earlier about the issues with the women and needing mental illness, those coming who have been incarcerated. That is something that we look at both for men, women, youth, young, old, all, all different generations. So thank you, Council President. The KCD, King Conservation District, we had our meeting today. We have a number of new members, and so today was mainly about reviewing the budget and our programs, bringing everybody up to speed, and I now chair that commission. And then I was on, oh, Arts Commission will be meeting, we will also be meeting this month, we have not yet, and I was on a higher ed roundtable along with the mayor last week, which was very interesting, I thought. So had some good takeaways from that. Wait, that is it for me.
Thank you, Councilmembers. Madam Mayor, that ends our report.
All right, thank you, and thank you, Council, for all the work that you are doing outside of your job as council members here in Kent, to make sure that, that we're being represented. And Councilmember Boyce, thank you for bringing up that SCA Annual Meeting. It, it was a great meeting. As, as SCA President this year, part of my role in that was to talk about all of the things we've accomplished as an organization and cities in the last year. And when you stop to look back at everything that, that we've done, even with this pandemic going on, and helping to get us through, it's a, it, it ended up being a pretty impressive list, and I'm proud of, of the work that all of you are doing and all of our elected colleagues around King County to, to keep things moving forward, even when it would be a whole lot easier, I think, for us just to sort of dig our heels in and not, and not get the tough stuff done. So thank you very much.
Madam, I want to also thank you for leading us as the president, right? So you've done a phenomenal job leading SCA, and I know you can still be on, but we really miss you. We'll miss you and your leadership, so thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Can I add something too? I want to thank you for the Racial Equity Series. I think that was really what we needed this year, for sure.
Yeah, it's that Racial Equity Series that was put on by a group of our members of color of SCA. Really amazing work and hard conversations, but I think they've been really valuable. So thank you, Councilmember Mouchau, for recognizing the work that, that that group has done and putting that on. It's, we'll, we'll continue into next year, for sure. Okay, with that, we are going to move on in our agenda, and item number five is, or actually, we just finished item number five. Item number six is public hearings. We do not have any this evening. Item number seven is public comment. Kim, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
I do not.
All right, so just as a, as a reminder to the public, if you want to sign into a council meeting to provide public comment, you need to let our city clerk know by 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting. You can either call in or send an email, and Kim will get you the information to call into our council meeting and provide that comment. Item number eight this evening is our consent calendar, and this is a compilation of items that the council has- that the council has worked on over the past several committee of the whole meetings. We have a full list this evening, items A through J. Council President, is there a motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve Consent Calendar Items A through J.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries 7-0. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda under Other Businesses is ordinances amending KCC 13.01 and 14.01, our building codes. Joining us this evening is John Napier. John, I'm going to turn it over to you for the presentation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. This is Matt Gilbert. I'm joining John Napier this evening. I think I'm an unlisted presenter, but I presented on this on December 1st, so I'd like to go ahead and introduce this and see where we want to go with it.
Absolutely, thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. Again, this is Matt Gilbert. I'm the Deputy Director of the Economic and Community Development Department, and because ECD administers a lot of these codes that are before you tonight for update, I'm here, as well as Fire Marshal John Napier, because he and his group administer the fire codes, which are kind of bundled together with, with the building codes and affect buildings and building systems, maintenance and, and things like that in the city. We covered this on December 1st, and I think we went into a lot of detail about what the fire code, how the fire code was changing primarily, but there are a few administrative sections that are being changed that I wanted to cover with you tonight, because we hadn't finalized that language back on the first. I'll step back just a bit, just to remind you that the State Building Code Council is just about constantly looking at the building codes and how they could be improved and how they can be reformed. And every three years, they publish an update that all of the cities, I believe it's, there are a few exceptions, but most cities in the state are required to administer these building codes. So they will go into effect on February 1st, and this is the 2018 edition. So they're always a few years behind, but that's just how they, they name their codes. So again, those are effective on the first. So each city is able to adopt local, local amendments that mostly relate to the administrative, or the way the codes are administered, and also in order to respond to local conditions. And I think you'll see with the fire code that there are some local condition type of amendments that John Napier, I think, can cover here. But the one that I wanted to focus on, that we didn't quite have nailed down on the first, relates to permit validity periods. So this is something that we deal with quite a lot. When, when a person wants to build a thing, a deck, a home, a warehouse, whatever, they make a permit application. And that application, once it's approved, is valid, is valid for about six months. So what we're doing is increasing that validity period to one year. We want to make sure that people have ample time to get their financing together and move forward with their project. So, or that that can sit there. So once the permit goes out the door, then there's a period of validity where a, a building is, or a project needs to get built within a certain amount of time. So we're increasing those amounts of time. We're about doubling those up to, saying that a project needs to start within a year, and then once a project starts, it needs to be done within three years. Or as long as it's progressing, it can get six-month intervals. So again, this is trying to be customer service oriented and understand that projects sometimes take longer than the code would normally require them, or they, they take longer to get done than the code would normally allow. So we want to allow some more time. The code is always allowed for extensions, which basically means more paperwork. So what we're doing is building in these automatic or larger amounts of time, so that we don't have to require people to make these formal requests for permit extensions. So it kind of streamlines our process, gives our, our, our permit customers more time to get their projects done, and kind of takes the load off of everybody. So that's on page 362 of your packet, if you're interested in that, but that's new from last time. Otherwise, we covered quite a bit, and John Napier covered quite a bit in some detail about the fire code updates on December 1st. So if you'd like, I think we can maybe just hit a few of those highlights. John's on the line here, and I think he's able to do that, and I think we can just kind of move quickly through those. So, John, if you would, wouldn't mind doing that?
Yeah, thanks, Matt. Good introduction for that. Yeah, if you want to go to the next slide. So these are all the, the codes that are going to be adopted by the city. These are all adopted by WAC rules, by the State Building Code Council, and we adopt all of these codes within the City of Kent. Next slide. Again, this, this code normally is adopted on July 1st of 2019. It got delayed because of some staffing issues of the State Building Code Council and then the pandemic hit. And so we go ahead, went ahead and bumped it to February 1st of 2021. So by adopting it tonight, we will have our, our obligation to the state to adopt the State Building Code Council by February 1st. Next slide. Again, this is the slide that talked about the expiration of the LIDIA permits, so we can go to the next slide. And, and really, the, the nuts and bolts of the fire code update, even though it is sizable, is dealing with some housekeeping to align the, the code with some renumbering, some clarification of existing provisions, and we created two new operational permits to help regulate fire protection system contractors and hood and duck servicing contractors. And the last one, which is the meat of it, is a large chapter dealing with in-building radio systems, and we're trying to do this consistently across King County, so it was pretty labor-intensive to get this all together, but we got it all inserted in, in the fire code. And I think that's the end of the, the slides. Any questions?
Any questions for John or Matt? All right, I am not seeing any hands raised at this point. So if there are no questions, then a motion would be in order. Got a motion, second? All right, I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries 7-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Okay, moving on to item number 10 this evening, which is bids. We have two, the James Street and Second Avenue Pedestrian Crossing Bid Award, as well as the West Hill Reservoir Bid. And I believe we've got Drew Holcomb presenting on both of these.
Yes, hello. Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Drew Holcomb with Public Works Design, and I'm here today to talk to you about two projects that I worked on that we received bids for, and we would like to request awards, to award the project. The first project is James and Second, and can, can you go back a slide? Sorry. Thank you. So this is a vicinity map, kind of just gets you a sense of where this is in the city. So yep, right there where the mouse is going, you've got the Showware Center kind of on the north there, and then Kent Station a little south of that. So next slide, please. So this, this is, the, this project will construct a crosswalk and widen the median to provide safe crossing for pedestrians. From, it will allow residents from the North Park neighborhood to more easily access Kent Station and the Sounder train and bus and garage facilities there. The city was recently awarded a grant from Sound Transit, which funded this project. And next slide, please. And this kind of shows the area of where we're going to be constructing the beacon. You can see there's some, some failing pavement there, and so as part of this, we'll also be doing an overlay to repair the pavement. The bids for this project, we got about, we got seven bids, and the low bidder was Northwest Cascade. And Northwest Cascade is currently working on the 76th Road Racing Project by Blue Origin. And the bid results were very good. They came in 8% under the engineer's estimate. Any questions about this project?
Any questions for Drew? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and do the motion on this before we move forward. Is there a motion regarding the James Street and Second Avenue Pedestrian Crossing Bid?
Yes, Mayor. I move to award the James Street and Second Avenue Pedestrian Crossing Project to Northwest Cascade Incorporated in the amount of $207,296, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents, subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the city attorney and public works director.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries 7-0. Thank you very much. Okay, Drew, we'll turn it back over to you for the West Hill Reservoir Bid.
And I'm happy to come talk to you guys about the West Hill Reservoir again. I, I know I've been talking to you a bunch about this and, and Committee of the Hall and a couple council meetings, and we're finally at a project award, so I'm excited. This, again, is a picture showing the landscaping, which we're, we hired a landscape architect to kind of spruce the site up a little bit, because we understand that it was previously a park and we're turning it into a utility site, so we're hoping to make it look a little bit better there. Next slide, please. This is some photos of construction of the 640 reservoir, which was done on the east hill. This reservoir was constructed by the contractor, T. Bailey, and they were the low bidder for this project as well. Next slide, please. This is a potential mural, so we're going to be working on the mural concurrently. It's not included in this contract, but it will definitely be part of the project. So I'll be back to talk to you about that when we have some developments on that soon. We received two bids for this project, and that was expected, because this is a very specialized project. As you can imagine, a tank like this, there's only a few contractors in, in the area, I mean, even along the west coast that are capable of constructing this. So two, we, two bidders was not surprising, and as I mentioned, the low bidder was T. Bailey, and they were within 2% of the engineer's estimate. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about this project.
All right, thank you, Drew. Any questions before we call for the motion? All right, I'm not seeing any, so a motion would be in order.
Madam Mayor, I move to award the West Hill Reservoir Project to T. Bailey Incorporated in the amount of $8,485,756.40, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents, subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the city attorney and public works director.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you, Drew.
Two successful bids this evening.
Thank you very much. Item number 11 is executive session, and we do not have any executive session this evening. So that brings us to the end of the meeting. Before we close out our final council meeting of the year, I would love to say thank you so much to all of our councilmembers for the work that you've done in this unprecedented, feels like it's getting to be an overused word, but I don't know what else to say. It is unprecedented year. There's, nothing has gone like any of us had expected when we started into 2020. Want to say thank you for your willingness to be flexible and the work you've put in this year. And I also want to very publicly say thank you to all of our City, City of Kent employees, from our, from our line folks up through our directors. Everybody has chipped in to make this year everything that it can be. We've continued to provide all of the services that our community has come to expect, and for all of that work, I am extremely grateful. My final thank you this evening is to Derek Matheson. He is the one that keeps this ship running and moving forward, makes, make sure that we're all, we all have all the information to make the decisions we need to make, and keeps everybody in line, and I am grateful to get to work with him every single day. So with that, we are going to bring our final meeting of 2020 to a close. Thank you, be safe, wear your masks, we're going to get through this, we're, we're, we're coming out the other side, right? There's a vaccine in the works, and things are going to be better in 2021. So thank you and good evening.
Happy New Year.